We're born, that's part of it. So when I think about mental health daily, I think about an apple. So that we have to be as caring of ourselves and our mental health as we are of our physical health. And I know this too, because part of being a psychologist is you have to be willing to take the medicine that you give. And I've seen a psychologist, and I wouldn't hesitate to see a psychologist again. And what matters most is not that one hour you're together, it's all the hours in between. And my PhD research was on teacher enthusiasm and the idea that you want to spark and ignite something similar to you when you're working with the students, we want to ignite and spark something in our students because what matters most is what happens beyond it. So all the work that I do in my speaking, my writing, my teaching, I want to make sure that I provide resources that support you, your family, your students, your future kids. Because if the pandemic taught us anything, it's how everything is interrelated. Every part of this world is interrelated. So that you, if you are caring for the mental health and the education needs of your students, supporting the teachers in the classroom, you want to make sure at the same time you're caring for yourself. And that's how I came to, and you have copies of these slides. That's how I came to look at positive psychology in the late 1990s, early 2000s. What I found when I was practicing as a psychologist, because of who I am, I am a very caring, sensitive, empathic person, and that's what drew me to psychology in the first place. And so up until really about 1999, and you can see on this graph, you have a copy of it. The majority of psychology focused on what was wrong with you, not what's right with you. And think about your daily life in your work as a support worker, frontline staff. People don't necessarily, teachers, parents, don't necessarily come to you when things are good. They come to you when things are bad. And so that's one of the reasons I turned to positive psychology. And positive psychology isn't, and do not confuse it with toxic positivity. Positive psychology runs deep. And that's the model I'm going to share with you, a model of positive psychology that allows me to come to you today. It allows me to be out in the community, it allows me to be in the classroom and up to 500 students a year, and be fresh because I am taking care of my mental health needs. So this is based on an article, and you have a link to an article called Cultivating Mental Health Daily. I summarized everything in this article. I write for the drive. And what you'll see in part of this model is that when you're creative, it's one of the best ways to deal with challenge. So I started my psychology blog called Thriving Under Pressure in 2015 because what I noticed in the classroom, and I taught at the Teachers College for 10 years and been teaching at St. Clair College for 2003. And I have a sense, and I know for sure, that there are former students of mine that are in here right now because I teach in the EA program, the CYW program, the nursing program, and I also taught at the Teachers College. And once again, education has to be community-based. So what I found in 2015, you know, in a sense, I thought I left it behind the therapy office, but what happened in the classroom is, so that would be seven years ago, is that the problems and the issues started to be more personal. And I knew, I'm very clear in boundaries, we have great mental health services at the college. So my job is not to care for their mental health, but my job is to get them where they need to go. But what I found is that they started to really struggle with stress. And put your hand up if this is you currently. Stress started to become anxiety, started to become trauma, started to become absolutely crippling. And what I noticed in my work with them is it wasn't so much that it was the volume of stress. Because think back to, you know, talk to your parents, talk to your grandparents. It was they seemed to not have the capacity to cope with the stress. And so what I started to notice is I started to have the same questions every single day in class. And one of the biggest ones was students did not know how to handle failure. That initially, when I first started teaching, that they would be satisfied and happy and content, because I think about grade inflation, with a mark of B. And now they were absolutely devastated by a beer, by a B. Maybe they needed a beer later because of it. And so what I helped them to understand, and this is the whole concept of positive psychology and the work that I do, is that we have to focus on what's right first. So that when they were upset about failures, when they were going through difficulty coping with the volume of work or any of those things, then what I would help them do through my blog, through my writing, and then ultimately my TEDx Talk, Thriving Under Pressure, is that let's fill yourself up with what's good first. So something as simple as, and think about this when you work with your students. Think about this when you work with the teachers and the principals. Something as simple as asking, what is the best thing that happened today? And I'm going to ask this of you. What is the best thing that happened today? And I would create boards on the blog board. And so they'd come, I'd have them for three-hour lectures, they'd come in the classroom just spent. And that one simple exercise would elevate them up and realize that failure, for example, a B, that school wasn't about the letter, it was about the learning. And so that was based on, and that developed into what I'm going to be talking today. It's called the PERMA Model of Positive Psychology. And that was developed by Martin Seligman. He gave the presidential address at the American Psychological Association in 2000. And he compared the research in psychology up until that point and found that it was about 95% of the research was on what's wrong with people, what their illness was, what their difficulty was, what, not just what was right. And what I'm going to talk to you about today is it's not simply about positive emotion. That positive psychology is a strategy. Positive psychology is something that will broaden and build your horizons. Because I am not a Pollyanna. I am, I am somebody that sees absolutely everything. And what I know for sure is I do not want what's happened in the pandemic to cripple us, to cripple our students. I want it to be an opportunity for growth. Once we have the foundation there, once we have a framework there. And by the way, everybody who's listening and watching right now, you have survived personal pandemics. And the difference between a personal pandemic and a global pandemic is a personal pandemic, and I know this. I speak from experience, I'm not immune to any of it, is that there's so much shame and humiliation that goes with that. And that's something we certainly want to work on and we will work on. But what a global pandemic, we didn't cause it. We had nothing to do with it. And, but at the same time, we learned a lot of life lessons in it. So I'm going to talk about why the first, kind of like the first chapter of the PERMA Model that was developed by Martin Seligman. And yes, there's an article that will go along with this. By the way, I don't expect you to remember everything that we talked about today. I want to ignite a spark in you to remind you how much you already know. As when I teach psychology, I remind students, if you're a human being, you know this, but I'm going to provide a framework which really balances the left and the right side of your brain. And this framework that I'm introducing right now is something that I would encourage you to use. That you can print off these PDF slides and have a wheel like this on your fridge in your home. Have a wheel like this in your classrooms, put it on your phone, and just say, you know what? It's not working today, I'm having a low day. How can I give myself mental health daily? What are five different areas that I can improve? And the first one is positive emotion. So what I'd like all of you to do right now is write down something that makes you feel alive. What is something that makes life worth living? It doesn't have to be work-related, it doesn't have to be family-related, it could be whatever it is. It could be a passion that you have for astronomy, it could be working in your garden, it could be the sunshine. So what makes you feel alive? Write down those five things, and that's the beginning of your apple-a-day prescription for mental health. So that this is based on the research, and all the links are in your PDFs, of Dr. Barbara Frederson. She did research on what's called the broaden and build model of positive emotion. And what she found was, not only does positive emotion flood your body with neurotransmitters that allow you to see the brighter side of things. So what it does is, we know that positive emotions, we all want to feel good. But it also takes you from a very, and this is a research, it takes you from a very, so the first P is positive emotions, what makes you feel alive do that. So this morning I went for a bike ride, I listened to music, I had a smoothie. And they're just simple things that make a really big difference. And then, and you do it, it's like layering, you make sure that you do it every day. And then what she also found, and this is really key, because we are being inundated by negative information constantly. She also found that we need a three-to-one ratio of positive to negative emotions. And what she found is, on average, most people have two positive emotions to every negative emotion. But because of our brain, we have what's called a negativity bias effect. So if I zapped you throughout the day and asked you what all your positive experiences are, you would write them down, and you would actually have more positive experiences than you remember because you know them. But when I ask you at the end of the day, and think about the conversations you have with your kids when they come home, think about the conversations you have with friends. We tend, because of the negativity bias, to remember the negative part. And so that's why it's important to have more positive to negative interactions. And what we find in the research is someone that has clinical depression almost has a one-to-one. So because of the, I'll call it propaganda, this inundation of negative news everywhere we go, social media, Twitter, et cetera. What happens is when we're in a negative state of mind, or in her research show, she did eye trackers, we narrow in to what's wrong. Because what we're doing is essentially going after the prey. But what she did is she manipulated the mood of the subjects in her experiments by giving something as simple as a candy. And it was interesting because it wasn't, it wasn't the sugar. She would just give the candy in a wrapper. And what she did, she had different conditions, and what she found was, that, think back to some of the psych assessments that she looked at, what she found is she, in the research, if she had a negative condition versus a positive condition, she'd say, look at the top three squares, or look at the figure at the top, and tell which is most similar. And when somebody was in a negative state of mind, they would focus on specifics. So that they would look and see that it was the squares that were the same as the top figure versus the holistic triangle. And the point being is that as a community, we need to move together to see big picture. We need to see that when we take care of the positive mood of other people, that we actually lift ourselves. So when I go to the gym, I work at an F45 in Wisconsin, I'm in there, I'm cheering everybody on. You know, people probably think I'm absolutely nuts, and I don't care. Like, I actually wrote an article on how clapping, and everybody clap for yourself right now wherever you are, how clapping lifts the mood. And I clap for students when they come in the classroom. And I joke with them that I clap when my husband comes home from work because he made the right decision, he didn't go to a bar on the way home, he came home. So true, false, whatever it is. And so that when you shift the collective into a positive state of mind, then we look out for each other. And that's one of the ways that positive psychology really, as a community, makes a difference. So that's looking at, you know, what are all the different positive emotions? So it can be achievement, trust, gratitude, inspiration, pride. All these things that we notice this first in our students, and then we get to work. So when I'm teaching, and this is me with some of my students, when I'm teaching, I tell them that teaching is my absolute favorite, it is my absolute favorite part of the day. And one of the reasons that, so many reasons, but moving into the next E, the positive emotions, because the next E is engagement, okay? So PERMA, positive emotion, now we're moving into engagement. And so one of the, so these all stack on each other. So you're in a positive state of mind, you're feeling good, it's simple, it doesn't take a lot. And then what happens, and this is why I love, this is why I'm here. This is why I took the day off to be here with you, a vacation day to be here with you, is because what I'm creating, and you think about what brings you to a positive state of mind. When you're gardening, when you're reading, when you're sewing, when you're playing with your grandkids. What happens is that brings you into what's called a flow state. So that the flows, I could never pronounce his name. So the person who developed flow research, let's call him Dr. C. He is a Hungarian psychologist, and I'll give you, I have a story for everything. He's a Hungarian psychologist. And flow is being in the zone. It's almost an out-of-body experience. So when I was, when I tell my students that when I'm teaching, when I'm working out, when I'm writing, like, not the beginning, it's always hard in the beginning, but when I'm in that flow state, think about art for yourself, it's called flow because it flows out of you. So that the Dr. C, he's got the longest name possible, is a Hungarian psychologist who was about seven or eight in World War II. And what he found, so I'll just show the book, the book here too. What he found was that when he was seven or eight in World War II, and just coming out of World War II, so very similar to what's happening with us coming out of the pandemic, he noticed that the overall happiness, mood level in Europe was quite low. So he started to be interested in art. And what he found with art is that, here's the flow diagram. What he found with art is that artists would get lost, absolutely lost in the art. Musicians, lost in the music, and you can, in the reading too, lost in the music. And so for example, when I was using teaching as an example, when I'm teaching, I am not thinking about me. It's not my thoughts, it's not tomorrow, it's not yesterday. That when you are at a point in time that you, every part of your mental capacity is taken up by what you're doing, and the challenge that you're in matches the skill. Think of the opposite of that scrolling through social media. Think about the mental health of young people today. And one of the reasons it took such a dip was because of the amount of time they were spending on their phone versus actively constructing something. That our mental capacity, when we are in flow, takes up almost 100%, so you are lost in it. And so what he found with the artists is that they didn't, they didn't even look at the art when they were finished. They would go on to the next piece of art. And same with musicians, all of those things. And so what we want to do, and also there's, I was reading the research too, there's a tribe in northern Canada that every 25 years moves their entire tribe. Because when they get too complacent, when they get too comfortable, think about yourselves. This is why change is really key. And this is one of the, and if you have the drive at home, I know it's this drive. This, the latest drive, Cindy's up, Cindy on the phone. That why embracing change is so important because when we get too comfortable in what we're doing, what we end up doing is moving into, and if you can see it here, you'll see it. We want to be in a state of flow, which is, we're just challenged, like, I mean, like, if you don't think I had a level of challenge 20 minutes ago, if you don't think I had a level of challenge last night, if you don't think that you have so many challenges in your life right now, and the students that you work with have unbelievable challenges. What our job is and what we do with them, not for them, is help them increase their skill level. So just back to 2015. When I noticed that students were crippled by stress, it wasn't the stress, it was the skill level. And so my hope, and that's why I have such an interest in resilience and all of that, is because we can increase the skill. And we know for sure that stress is a contributor to mental illness. And if we can go back to the beginning and give them the ability to do that. And so, of course, I'm representing with flow water. So when we're in the zone, when our skill is not matched to our challenge, then we start moving into a place that is pure joy. So we're in a good, we're feeling positive, that we are fully engaged in what we're doing. Now, if you look at emotions and relationships, the next R has to do with relationships. And there are two parts of relationships really. One is tuning in to the emotions and the languages of others. So that's why emotional intelligence and having meaningful relationships is noticing whether or not somebody speaks your love language, which is a communication skill. So for example, personal example, I am somebody who, if you can, so let's talk about the different love languages. So acts of service, quality time, words of affirmation, receiving gifts, physical touch. So that, let's go home right now, let's go to your family relationships, let's go to your home relationships. One of the reasons that we have, because often you can equally go both ways, that we have a disconnect in relationships is because we're speaking our language, not theirs. That we're speaking our language, not theirs. So for example, for my husband, it's all about acts of service. And for me, it's all about words of affirmation. So when I'm not feeling fulfilled in the relationship, then I may be looking at it only from my perspective. And if I start to notice all the things, nice things, like filling up my car, cutting the grass, which is how he expresses love, and mine is words of affirmation. Same with relationships at work. This can be a source of support, it can be a source of encouragement, it can also be a place where you can be brought down. And so start to notice, are you speaking their love language? Get outside of yourself because part of cultivating mental health daily is realizing that we can't do it in isolation. That it's one thing to be yourself, happy, go lucky, having, you know, all these things working for you. But what we know is that there's such a thing as emotional contagion. And so that's back to stress, and I will show you and talk to you about that stress is good. Stress is good for us because think about your relationships. I worry about relationships that don't have conflict. Because if relationships don't have conflict, then it means that you're at a very superficial level in the relationship. There's people pleasing going on, you're not willing to go deep, you don't feel safe. You know, you don't want it all one way or all the other way. And so part of being effective in a relationship too is, are you an over-giver? Because if you're an over-giver, for example, one of my favorite TEDx talks is called Make Stress Your Friend. And it's by Dr. Kelly McDonald. And she talks about, she's a health psychologist, and this is one of my favorite courses that I teach in the health programs at the college in nursing is health psychology. And it's the idea that she always thought stress was bad. It's not stress that's bad. As I said to you right there, that conflict in relationships is good when it gets you to a higher place. Stress is good when you look at some of the, many of the benefits. One of them is, when we experience stress, it brings relationships closer together. Because what tends to happen is that when times are good, we don't necessarily reach out. But the second things are bad, we tend to pick up the phone and call someone. And it's evolutionary that we're built in for difficult times. We're talking about relationships, stress, and connection, and community. And what happens is that when we reach out to someone and we connect on that level, and remember, there's a difference between complaining and actual problems. Complaining, I heard the saying that if you complain once, you're looking for a solution. If you complain more than once, you're looking for attention. So you call somebody up, you're looking for a solution, you're having a difficult time. She did research to show that if you reached out and connected with someone over difficult times, think about the fact that you are seeking out challenge in life and you're looking for someone to support you during that challenge. Our body is flooded with oxytocin, which is called the cuddle hormone. And so that evolutionary-wise, we are built to reach out for others. So the caveat to that is, and we hear this word all the time, is boundaries. So it's important in relationships, I'm talking about each of the five parts of the PERMA Model, and how there are different ways for you to look at positive emotion, engagement, and now relationship from a level, think about flow, think about flow, that runs deep. The idea, and I really appreciate that Dr. Mark invited me to speak to you today, is that I have been studying psychology since 1988, practiced psychology from 1998 until 2016, and now I've been teaching in 20, what year is it, 2022. So everywhere I go and everything I do is like a psychology experiment. If I don't understand something, I need to get below the surface of it. So I'm encouraging you that no matter what happens today and moving forward, get curious about it and look deeper. Okay, so you're connecting, you're getting that oxytocin going, you're having supportive relationships. You might have some conflict, you're speaking each other's love language, but then you have that person that calls and calls and calls. And that's why it's really important to have boundaries. And this was the second last article I wrote for the drive, and it was Put a Prime Limit on Negativity. And so what that means is that share your problems, share your difficulties, but also leave room for joy. And that's part of having honest conversations because we all have one or two people that as soon as you see that number come up, you're just like, oh my God, I just can't do that. And by the way, I am that person for at least one or two people in my life. I'm very human, you know, I think about how often that I share with the people that are closest to me first instead of taking a step back, and this is a really good solution, and say, is this a good time? Because relationships have to be two ways. And we don't want to burn out our relationships. We also want to make sure that we take accountability. Accountability and for all the parts that we contribute to other people's difficult times. That when I have someone come and see me that would want, back when I practiced, that was thinking about leaving their spouse, I'd say, you know what? I bet your spouse is on somebody else's therapist's code. Because we, this whole idea of cultivating mental health daily is for you in your home, in your relationships. And you know what? I was meeting with the vice president of the college the other day, and I said, what I worry about the most, what I worry about the most for the next generation is the quality of life. So we want to make sure that we set the bar high for them in relationships. When my students come into the classroom, that phone is turned off and in their bag. We are connecting, and if they choose to be on their phone, hey, they can be on the phone somewhere else. If they want to take a nap, I'll encourage them to take a nap over being on their phone. So that's a really big part of relationships, and myself too. How much is your technology getting in the way of your relationships? Make sure it's an add-on and not something that blocks it. Okay, so that's relationships, and that really comes down to this. It's emotional and social intelligence. And that really encapsulates that, you know, how emotionally aware are you? I'm not saying don't have negative emotions, but don't have it take up 100% of your life. Like, start to pay attention to how often you, because there are two kinds of people, right? The people that stuff the emotions and the people that overexpress. Let's look for equal parts of that. So emotional regulation, self-awareness, social awareness, and you know, set the bar, set the bar on that. So that is positive emotion, engagement, flow, relationships, and then why we are here. The next one, which is the second last one, is meaning. You know, if I were to ask you, why? What's your why? Why is your purpose? I mean, that sounds so big, but the way I see it, the way I see it is purpose is who we are. That we are a walking purpose. Purpose is not a job. Because if purpose was a job, then we would be irrelevant before the age of 18 and we would cease to be relevant after the age of 65. But we can have purpose on the job. And so my perspective on purpose is that it really is a combination of what your strengths are, so this is a great resource, StrengthsFinder, and your personality, and how you can match it up to your job. So now, there's research to show also, once your basic needs are met, and the number, I'm sure is higher now, but say the number is $75,000 for a family, but don't get stuck on the number, but once your basic needs are met, your happiness does not increase in proportion to the amount of money that you make. And only somebody with money can say something like that. So I'm saying, once your basic needs are met, even beyond that. But what they found and what they know, and this is really back to the research on flow, is that your why is where you make a difference in the day. And so the meaning can be big and it can be small. And the work you are doing as education support workers, social workers, child youth care workers, EAs, all of the work that you're doing, there is absolutely no doubt the difference that you are making daily, but it might not be in the ways that you think. You are imparting skills, which is so key. But what, and I understand your group, because I work for the CIC program at St. Clair, and my job as a school psychologist was doing assessments, and I really understand that. But over and above that, and there's this quote, is that people won't remember what you said, they'll remember how it made you feel. So one of my strengths is enthusiasm, one of my strengths is extroversion, and so that, and connection, and I've done the Strength Finders too. So that it doesn't mean that that is something that I need to, that's great that I have a job that does it as a professor, but I could also do it as a beggar at the grocery store, like begging groceries. I could also do that as a server. So it's that one thing that makes your world come alive. And I believe so strongly in the idea of asking why. So I'd like everybody to write down right now, so what is your why? What is it that makes you want to get out of bed in the morning? When you work with students, like for me, when I walk into the classroom, I don't care if there's two students or 500 students or four students. I walk into the classroom as I am teaching, and I tell them this daily, I'm teaching the future of Canada. That when I teach nurses, I have the opportunity to touch every patient that they're going to touch. When I teach childcare work, youth care workers, I have an opportunity to work with the young students that you work. I have an opportunity to somehow be part of your family. That what you do on the job and off the job changes people's lives. And meaning can be something as simple as walking down Gennaro Trail and smiling at a stranger. Seeing a lonely gentleman sitting on a bench and smiling at them and saying hello and seeing them come alive. So back to the PERMA, positive emotion, engagement, relationship, and meaning is that we have something called mirror neurons. So that when we smile and someone smiles back at us, we can't help, it's contagious. And so when I was teaching at the teachers' college, I had a student in the conferred education program, and she was saying that she was taking some chemistry courses. She had absolutely no idea why she was taking a certain subject. So I said to her, well, why don't you ask your professor? So that this is how you can infuse your meaning into the work. It's one thing in our lives, but how we can infuse it for the meaning into the work of our students, you can say to them, this is the difference it makes. So when I, I have them calculate their grades. I explain that grades are money, and that eventually money will become the, everything matters, everything's connected. So I, this is one of the textbooks that I wrote for McGraw-Hill. And then because of that student, so everything I'm sharing with you is inspired by students. And the prologue is why psychology? So why psychology? How many times have you asked yourself, why am I taking this course? How many times have you worked with this young student, and it doesn't matter what it was, and they would ask you why? Make it practical, make it concrete. So why is purpose, why is also an infusion of drive and spark? Why is what makes us feel that we matter? And I just circle back to my very first conversation with Dr. Mark. He wants you to know, this is why it took so many months for me to come to you, because so many hoopsy I could drop, like jump through to get me here in front of you, because he values your work. I have friends, one in particular, that has a sunwet down syndrome, and she talks all the time about the support workers in the schools. When I work, talk about meaning, this is what you mean to us. When I worked as a school psychologist, the first person that I would go and talk to in the school was the person that worked one-on-one, the EA, the CYWs, the social workers, the sign language interpreters. Everybody, all of us, all of us matter. And it's interesting, because purpose is both very, very personal and very, very universal. When, I don't know why, but I, well, I know why. But I offer, I were developing new health and wellness courses at the college. So I offered to teach a health and wellness course in the aesthetics program. So you can imagine, if you're teaching, if you're doing aesthetics, you can imagine how much, you think about it, well, I saw you got a pedicure and manicure, how much is shared with satisfaction? So that's a lot for these young people. You know, they're, they have the skill of, you know, their trade, but there's also something on top of it. So I'm teaching health and wellness, and part of our common together is how important it is to protect our mental health, protect our mental health, and be conscious of our mental health, no matter where we go. So I offered to teach this course. And it's eight, and I know you guys get aware, like my schedule's all over the place. But it's like, because of the pandemic, I had to be there at 6:00 AM Monday morning. And we were the first col, by the way, the only college that was in person across Canada. So I'm teaching, I had to be there 8:00 AM, because the protocols had to be there at 6:00 AM. I'm on my couch at 5:00 AM, and I'm thinking, why did I volunteer to teach this course? Why did I volunteer to teach this course? So I just remembered.
There we go, all right. Officially in the room, in this though.
No worries, we're in this together. So I said to myself, Andrea, there's one student, and I'm saying this to you too, when you're not feeling motivated, when you're struggling with your meaning. I knew there was one student that, that really cold rainy day, when I, and of course, I'm always into it, but at that moment, because I'm human, one student, one student in that classroom out of 100, that one student that struggled, that took three buses to get to school, that was the first generation college student, that was even struggling with to stay in school during the pandemic, that she needed my presence. So our purpose permeates every part of our life. You matter because you woke up. It doesn't only have to be a job. I know this myself and reflect on this too. It's how we are on the job, really, that my humanness has never come through more than since the pandemic. That we have this in common. We survived the pandemic, and we know not everybody did. That's our meaning. Our meaning is that we're alive. And so that, that is one of many things that guide me. And I think about our North Star as commitment, I think of it as a guiding light, something that keeps us going, you know, what's, it could be a grandchild. It could be, unfortunately, someone you may, and I'm sure you have somebody in here with me right now, lost somebody during the pandemic. I know that unfortunately, and I know somebody on the other side of the screen knows this, but I, I gave a keynote to the public health unit first, like in December, huge, like big. And I was really excited to do it on resilience and, but in the midst of me preparing for it, my stepmom of 31 years died suddenly of a heart attack. And she was a teacher, she was a guidance teacher, and she, for many, many, many years. And I knew that part of my purpose and moving forward and making it matter is that, you know, I dedicated that to her, and I dedicate that to her. This right now, Gia in Mallory Wood, she was at Blood and Mystic High School in Loudoun. Because all of us, all of us educators, I can't believe how many generations of educators are in my family. So that's part of your purpose too, it's intergenerational. And so the last A of the PERMA model is achievement. So we got, we have positive emotion, we have engagement, we have relationships, and they all build together. And some days, you know what, the relationship's rocking, but the achievement's gone. And you're in a bad mood, and by the way, be in a bad mood if you're in a bad mood. Nothing wrong with that, let it happen, but not 24/7. The final one is really, you know, how we show up, like this is our students. How do we take all of the positive emotion, engagement, relationship, meaning, and achievement? And remember, the whole idea of a model that works for all of us is that it's interrelated. That it works at work, it works at home, it works basically everywhere. And once again, I had this big conversation with Mike Silvaji at the St. Clair College, and some concerns that students aren't necessarily, you know, on the whole across Canada, showing the emotional intelligence skills that they need to, you know, all of that. And the point being, you can't just teach a course, it's got to be all the time. You have to be everywhere that you go. So for achievement, you know, especially with our young students, you know what? If you focus on one thing, and this is huge, considering the work you do, independent. You know, what motivates you? What keeps you going? Can you hear me okay? Okay, okay, so, so what motivates you? What keeps you going? What gives you purpose? What gets you? What moves you? What excites you? What drives you? What gets you out of bed in the morning? So this is where I start to talk to them about failure, and how failure is feedback. Failure is important. Failure is our greatest teacher. And I remembered, somebody asked me once what my greatest teacher was, and it wasn't a person, it was an experience. And that's why ultimately, we want to be able to teach students and ourselves that it's not this quote, Carl Jung, which is one of my favorite quotes. You're not what happened to you, it's what you choose to become. You're not what happened to you, it's what you choose to become. So this is where we can open it up to questions that you have. Any questions that you might have? And once again, this is the PERMA model. I would love you to ask me about any of the pieces, like the positive emotion, the engagement, the relationships, the meaning, the achievement. And the last one about achievement, it's really the idea that we want to make it hard for students, that we want to make it challenging for students, and that we encourage them along the way. That, you know, I asked them at the beginning of the spring semester, what grade are you hoping to achieve in this course? And 99.9% of what, I've been said 100%. And I said to them, but what are you hoping to learn? Because we get so fixated, and the only way that we ever learn is to fail. I absolutely would not be here with you now if I hadn't failed at so many jobs, if I hadn't been laid off, let go, if I hadn't, you know, had such a wild and windy road. And that's my very first, one of my very first blog posts, was when a student said to me, I can't believe I failed the test, actually, her version of failing was 72%. And I said, my very first exam in graduate school, statistics, you need stats. I, I got 38%. I'll remember the bike right after that, I rode my bike forever. And then I looked at her and I said, but I have a PhD in psychology. Every bad, every relationship that I have, bad included, led me to my husband. Every twisty road led me to Windsor. I never in my life, never wanted to be a professor or a teacher. My research was on teacher enthusiasm, but my idea was a psychologist in a school system, doing assessments, you know, meeting with teachers. But I had a point in time where I worked for the school board, actually worked for the Catholic School Board here, and I was laid off, and they brought me actually back, it's United, they brought me back in October, but I was there for years for ISO grants. And by that time, I'd found the college, and my husband said to me, are you sure? Like you're taking a major pay cut because you're only contract. And I said, all right, tech, so pizza in the university, I'll give speeches. So that there's a real connection between chaos and creativity. There's a real connection between failure and faith. There's a real connection between humility and grace. And we don't want to rob ourselves of what's next for us as a society, as a community. And there are so many people, and I want you to know, and I say this to people when I meet you, and then right here, that you're officially adopted as one of my psychology students. And I, if you go to my blog, and it's drandrea@denardo.com, now the YouTube channel, it's also Dr. Andrea DiNardo, and then my TEDx talk, Throwing Under Pressure. And that, you know, the best things in life that have happened to me, because I've had the opposite of PERMA, you know, but it was temporary. And what's permanent is the positive emotions broaden and build. The engagement brings us creativity and flow. The relationships that matter are the ones that have the difficult conversations. Meaning is who we are, it's, it's our walking purpose. It's noticing that spark in our students that has nothing to do with their IQ and absolutely nothing to do with anything but who they are. And then finally, achievement, that we feel safe enough to fail, that we, we show people, we tell our students, we're open, that where we struggle, and I tell the story when I'm sitting on the couch and don't feel like getting off, because they need to know, because they're living, unfortunately, not all of them, but many of them, a very superficial existence right now, that's two dimensional and on social media. And there's absolutely nothing more important than a messy life that's filled with love, that's filled with relationships, that's filled with chaos. And I never would have wished for the pandemic, but it has happened, and there are two roads to take. And I will be on that road with you, because Dr. Mike was kind enough to invite me here. So if you have any questions, please feel free, because I do love being challenged. And you can, you can connect with me on my blog too. So thank you. Thank you. You can see my office right now. This is why, another really good book that I like, if you want to talk about meaningful conversations. Martha Beck is a favorite author of mine, Steering by Starlight. If you are struggling with meaning, Martha Beck is a fantastic author, Steering by Starlight. Another way that I take my relationships, when I go out with friends, I bring this book with me, Questions for the Soul. Because we don't want to be having, at least myself personally. I, I prefer relationships that go beyond the monotony. And then this is a great introduction to positive psychology. And then as I shared, I have so many free resources, so many videos, so many blog posts, so many articles. Because my ultimate goal in psychology for everybody, because when the tide rises, we all rise. Any question? They're probably in there, I just can't see them. Okay, I see. Thank you. I'm looking at the chat now, if anybody wants to add any questions in there, and thank you for putting it. Thank you so much, I missed some in the beginning, this is such, it's going to be recorded, and I'm, and they're being generous enough, I'm going to, I can take bits of it, put it on my YouTube channel too. I want, you are so welcome. You know, the best part was that you got to see me thrive under pressure. That diamonds from pressure, there will always be pressure, and it's never easy, but it's always meaningful. When I go to the gym, I always say, I pay a lot of money, so I want it to be hard. Tell me where I'm failing. Tell me where I'm failing, and it's okay, it's really okay. Okay, so this, this is a great question. You know, this is a really good question, because I was just listening to the research on Dr. Frederickson, talked about systemic discrimination and different cultures. And as you can imagine, at St. Clair, we have all of the cultures. And I think one of the most important thing, like, because I'm a psychologist by trade, I really look at things from an individual perspective. So I think what's really important remaining, that we, that some parts of each culture, I call them the diamonds, that are unique to that culture, that I invite students to share in class. So I, I went set that are unique to that culture, that I invite students to share in class. So I, I, what sets us apart makes us, also makes us pretty damn wonderful. So one, I just, that's one technique I would use with, with, I mean, there are so many different races and cultures, but ask them to share, open everybody up to their perspective. Let them, let them share. And I want to shout out to a student leader from St. Clair College and a graduate of St. Clair College. I think a lot of you are graduates of St. Clair College, University of Windsor, all over the place. And, and I mean it. I mean it when I say that it's, it's incredible that we're together for an hour, but what really matters is what happens after this. And so my early research that I did on teacher enthusiasm, student engagement, learning and memory, is that we want to not just motivate ourselves, now explore the, the topic of the topic of positive psychology. All the links are there, all the PDFs are there, but also to encourage our students to think of a different way to look at failure. So when I talk about, I don't have a rule right now, but when I talk about resilience, I think about resilience being like a ruler. And that we're all, we're all bending and we're all bending. And some people almost get to the point of breaking and coming back. And what mental health does, what fitness does, what relationships do, what, being okay with failure, being comfortable with negative emotions. I've never seen, like, I'm all of, I, one of my first articles was leading I'm, I, there's nothing wrong with negative emotions. They tell us something really important, but we don't want to live there. We just want to visit them. We don't want to be living there. So that, like, we're all resilient. Our students have so much to teach us. The younger we are, the more flexible that we are. So we're like, definitely have the resilience, but flexibility and openness and being able to be wrong and letting them teach you. So, but I, I, and that was a really good question. That was the first question, only question so far. Um, about, uh, that you might have for me. You're so, you know how relieved I am right? Thank you. I appreciate, if you could see my setup right now. I ran upstairs, I got my iPad Pro and it did not go as planned. Oh, there's Dr. Mark who's probably on his way to another school. Excellent.
Well, you know what? I, I was, just as we started the questions, I, I am kind of in transport and of course, lost uh, all audio and video for a couple of minutes. Um, so I'm luckily now parked and I have an ability to rejoin. I was listening all the way.
I know my Dr. Mark's in flow.
Yeah, I was in flow, um, flowing all the way out to Essex. So I don't know if there's any more questions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I love this question. Okay. So one of the, one of the, I think about Twitter as making you hate everybody else and Instagram of making you hate yourself, okay? I counteracted. I know Dr. Mark counteracts with what he shares. One of the biggest challenges for ourselves and for our students, but challenge also means opportunity, is the level of, I'll just use the word, self-hate that's going on. So the question was around compassion for yourself. If you find yourself judgmental, and by the way, we're human. I'll never forget when I gave a topic. Uh, I did something called PACE. I worked with Learning Disabilities Association for a number of years. I did something called Parents Exceling, Children Exceling. And I had a parent, they went around and all the parents introduced themselves. And one of the parents listed off her kids and every child had a mental illness and then she had a mental illness. I, like, the way my, my face registered, it was like I was in shock, but it was just a lot of information. And I said to that parent, I said, I'm human. That was more information than I could handle. And of course, I think that's fantastic. I have even more respect for you. And my point being is that compassion for others starts with compassion for yourself. And that this is why in my position, it's really important for me to express my failures, express everything that goes wrong. But at the same time, as I say that, just like normalizing that what looked like judgment was just overwhelm. And what looks like, um, failure is just part of an average day. Oh, okay. So I have some questions about books that I share. Okay, so this, I, I, this is what I'll do. In addition to this, I have, I'll put together a resource list of ten books. And what I'll do is I'll put together resource lists of ten books. Uh, like I'll do two books for each section, okay? So this is, these are the books that I use for meaning and they just blow my mind. Like these books are so good, I can only read like two words at once. So yeah, so that's one of the books that I, if, if questions for the soul, that guarantees that conversation goes beyond mediocre. And this, this is actually an assessment. You can actually do, how the school board may in fact do it. And this is, this is another way of showing, basically combining positive emotion, engagement, relationship, meaning, achievement. Is that by the way, we're all geniuses. We are all geniuses at something. And that's a misnomer the world teaches us too. And Dr. Mark knows this because he teaches, he tests IQ for a living. So that there's always strengths and weaknesses. Okay, those are, okay, what was the name of the question? Yeah. So the question, it's somewhat a data, actually. I bought someone this. There's actually an if questions for relationships, like if questions for love. And somebody just got married, so I put that in their, their book. So I will put together ten, ten books to go, like books to go along with it. So you don't have to take a picture of them. Oh yeah, Strength Finder two point O, there could be a later one, Question for the Soul. Um, any specific hard hitting questions that I'm due to fail? Because I like to fail. And, and thank you so much for just riding along with what happened earlier.
I mean, we, we could ask you why the trial made was can't win the Stanley Cup? And when are my red wing, what are you gonna, what's the solution to my red wings? Right? If you want to, I think those are questions that would set up to fail.
Move to a different country.
Yeah. Um, so again, so, uh, you know what, I would like to, uh, on behalf of the board, really thank you for presenting today. I think that we've gotten a very strong message about the importance of taking care of ourselves, making sure we're positive, finding those things in our lives that are positive, uh, and making sure we go with those things. And I think, you know, one of the, one of the reasons that, and Andrea did say it today. When we were, when I was looking at a presentation, we wanted something that really was positive and we wanted something that would remind all of us as staff, the importance that we have, uh, and the, the, the amount of the way we do impact people. Uh, and we typically do it very positively. The majority of, of the impact we have on people is positive. That message doesn't get out enough. It, it just never happens enough. The school boards are so busy and there's so much stuff happening all the time. That, you know, it may be said, you know, it's kind of like you think, I think about it sometimes and you say, you know, um, you know what, we say it in September and we say it somewhere about around Christmas time, uh, and then you hear it again at the end of the school year. Um, but that's the importance of really knowing the impact and how important you are. And we wanted to leave you with something like this this year versus some kind of thing that, you know what, you would, you would walk away from and say, you know, what did I really get from that? Uh, so we really thank you, Andrea, for coming in and being, uh, providing that message for us today.
It is my pleasure. And as I said earlier, when you're in flow and everybody else, the first message that Mark wanted to get across was how valued you are. And you, all of you in here are, if you think of a table, you're the four legs of the table. And there's absolutely no way that any teacher or any community member or any parent could do what they do without you. And if ever you need a reminder of that, I know that Dr. Mark's there to remind you and you can pop over to my blog anytime. And this is, uh, trust me when I say, this message doesn't come because my life was easy. It came because I had to dig deep. And some of you may be in that place right now where you're experiencing, I know it's the end of the semester or the end of the year, it's getting to the end of the year. But what I find is when you take a pause, even if it's just five minutes in a day or ten minutes, and don't pick up your phone, take a pause and know that you are enough and you are, you are contributing and I, I'm just so grateful. So thank you, Dr. Mark, and thank you, everybody, and for riding along with me. And good luck and have a wonderful weekend, have a great summer. And the next week or so, Dr. Mark, I'll send over another resource page with the book.
Thank you very much. I would be happy to distribute that.
Okay. And remember, apple day applies to your mental health too. So I think I will eat this now. So have a great day. Thank you. Thank you. Bye-bye. Till next time. Take care. Yes, we're all the same. We are all the same. Psychologists especially. Psychologists, we're our own psychology experiment. So thank you very much, everybody.